Good morning. It is 10:00 AM on October 24, 2023. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
No, moved.
Moved and seconded. Heddens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. And seeing no one step forward, we'll close public comment number one and move to bid opening for Story County Administration Building Generator Replacement. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, I think Jeff handed out some tally sheets for all of you, so we'll get started. You gonna write?
Sure, alright.
Multitasking.
You read, alright.
I'm just pulling the first one out. There's another one in there. Alright, the first one is for Van Monen Electric Incorporated, out of Newton, Iowa. Okay. In fact, we got a bid bond for the correct amount. Okay, they acknowledge addendum one and addendum number two. Okay. We've got the base bid three hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and forty-eight, three-five-zero, nine-four-eight. Okay, and for alternate number one, to add all work associated with reinstalling of existing generator at the Engineers Complex would be one hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars, one-two-five, three-two-seven, with a zero-dollar trade-in or repurposing value of the existing generator here at the Administration Building.
Yeah, and I didn't don't have a line item on this form for that, just for informational purposes more than anything.
Then, alternate number two for a one-year service plan would be twelve hundred dollars. Alternate number three would be a five-year service plan for fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty, one-four-seven-five-zero. And listing generator they would supply for the Administration Building would be Caterpillar Brand. I think I hit all of them, yeah.
Yeah, they are the electrical contractor, so there's no subcontractor on that. The only other is the time, the duration.
Duration.
Second page, yeah.
Fifty-two weeks duration. Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of questions.
Yeah.
Lot of information.
Alright. Now. Second bid is from Harold Pike Construction, out of Ames, Iowa. Bid bond is included. Look at that. Yes, and they have shown they received addendum number one and addendum number two. Have a base bid of four hundred and fifty thousand, four-five-zero, zero-zero-zero, fifty-two week duration. Alternate number one, to add relocating this generator to the Engineers Complex of one hundred and twenty thousand, one-two-zero, zero-zero-zero, zero-dollar trade-in value or repurposing value of the existing generator here at the Administration Building. Alternative number two, one-year service plan, fifteen hundred dollars, one-five-zero-zero. Alternate number three, five-year service plan of, for fourteen thousand, one-four-zero-zero-zero. They list Caterpillar is the generator brand they would supply, and their electrical subcontractor would be Klein Electric. Okay, so the only two we've received show a tentatively low from Van I'm gonna say it wrong.
Van Monen.
Van Monen.
You got it right.
But we will review and bring a recommendation back to the board at later date, maybe next week.
Yeah.
And both bids are well within budget.
Perfect.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's good.
Significantly within budget, so that is.
That's good news.
Good news, yes. Our budget was eight sixty-seven, eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
Wow. Was that, okay.
So yes.
And it was high.
Okay.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, we have no agency reports today. Moving to consideration of proclamation recognizing October 28, 2023 as National First Responders Day. Supervisor Merkin?
Whereas Congress designated October 28th as National First Responders Day, Responders Day in 2017, the resolution honors the firefighters, police officers, EMTs, and all those who are first on the scene in stressful situations. And whereas there are more than twenty-five point three million first responders in the United States, and whereas millions of Americans have benefited from the courageous service of first responders across the nation.
And whereas the men and women who bravely serve as first responders have found themselves on the front lines of emergency medical incidents, including structure and wildland fires, natural disasters, and a recent pandemic, and whereas thousands of first responders have made the ultimate sacrifice over the years.
And whereas October 28th has been previously recognized by the US Congress as honoring the nation's first responders day. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim October 28th, 2023 as National First Responders Day in Story County, and encourage our citizens to celebrate and appreciate these men and women in our communities. I move the proclamation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Heddens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Moving to consideration of minutes from October 17, 2023?
I move approval of the ten seventeen twenty-three minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Heddens.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions as listed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Heddens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Consideration of claims.
I move approval of claims as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Heddens.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Consent agenda. I forgot to mention at the start, we are pulling um, where is it? Item four, thank you. We are pulling four for another day. So consent agenda, removing item four.
I move approval of consent to items with the noted item four being pulled from the agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Heddens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. We have no public hearing items today. Moving to additional items, we have discussion and consideration of proposals for architectural and engineering design services for the remodel of general office space at the Justice Center. Hi again, Joby.
Okay. Yes. The proposals for remodel project at the Justice Center, the in my memo, we received two. And we scored them based off of the criteria laid out in the RFP and my recommendation is to go with RMH Architects for sixty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars. That is close to what we had budgeted for architectural design and construction administration fees. Sixty thousand is what is slated in the overall budget for the project, so their fees are a little over than what we had budgeted, but within reason, so. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Joby? I don't know. Alright, thanks for your work on this, Joby, by the way.
You bet.
Well, with
Long one in the works.
Yeah. With that, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the proposal from RMH Architects for remodeling the attorney, the county attorney's space.
So moved. Or second, sorry.
Of motion and a second. Merkin.
Aye.
Heddens.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving now to discussion and consideration of Iowa HAF program agreement between Iowa Finance Authority and Story County Treasurer. Morning Ted.
Good morning. Yo, on these. So post-COVID, the Iowa Finance Authority received some funding to help out homeowners that were either significantly behind in their mortgage payments or in some other lean or financial distress on their properties. So they came up with this program called the Iowa Homeowner Assistance Fund to help pay off one-time payment to a person who was adversely affected by COVID to pay off an outstanding amount of mortgage payment or property taxes. The initial run of this program started a little over a year ago, I think, maybe even fifteen or sixteen months ago. At that time, the Finance Authority did not really consult with counties on how they were gonna, you know, administer this program. And they wanted to explain, or they wanted to include a part of their agreement that said if it was found out that somebody retained funds fraudulently, that the county would have to return that money to them. The way we do property taxes is we collect the property tax money and then immediately distribute it to all taxing authorities. So once we disperse that money, we cannot get it back and return it. So at that time, former county attorney Ethan Anderson advised us that we would not enter into an agreement until they could clean up that language and some other language that was onerous to the county. It took them quite a while, but they came out with a new agreement a couple of months ago that removed that language. And I presented the new agreement to County Attorney Crystal Rink, Assistant County Attorney Crystal Rink. She reviewed it and said at this point in time, it looks like an acceptable agreement for the county. The primary reason for the agreement is we do have Story County taxpayers who have qualified for this program that would like to be able to pay off back property taxes. And the Finance Authority will not make those payments until our office comes to the agreement and signs the agreement. So when we collect property taxes, our primary goal is to make the taxing authorities whole so that they can complete the activities outlined and required in their annual budgets and make sure that they're able to meet their needs. And then our secondary authority or purpose is to make it as, you know, the least onerous as we can on the property owners, make it as easy as we can for them to, to make those entities whole. So our office, with the approval of the review of the County Attorney's Office, feels comfortable entering into this agreement. Upon Crystal's suggestion, she said, you know, do not enter into any agreement. Just as the Treasurer's Office, let's get the board to review and approve as well. As part of the agreement, they do not ask for a full 2080. It is just a participation agreement, so there is no spot for the board to sign. But we definitely want, you know, I don't know if we would add a signature for the board. We did. Okay. So we would be a lot more comfortable if the, you know, county as a whole entered into the agreement, not just the Treasurer's Office, as we are most agreements, typically county. Not necessarily policy, but just kind of the way we've all agreed to work through things, so. We're comfortable with it at the time. We feel pleased that this will help a few different property taxpayers who has, who have asked about the program. Help them out, help them to stay in their house and help to get those back taxes paid off and make the entities whole. So guys have any questions on it?
Well, are there any other responsibilities that the Treasurer's Office is taking, would be handling in terms of administration of this program?
No, that's a question I asked. I asked them if all they were doing was paying off property taxes for someone, why we needed to enter into an agreement? Why they couldn't just send us a check? They said they just wanted this agreement signed so that we were fully understanding that we would may have, may have to provide them with some information, some non-public information, private information that they would show us, you know, the property tax owner has signed off on us giving this information. So it's primarily those parts of the agreement where we agree to provide them information going forward and provide like a receipt that the payment was made and received and things like that. All things that we would normally do anyway, but they just want to enter an agreement.
Ted, how do folks, do they then apply for this? And do they apply through Iowa Finance Authority?
So part of the agreement is they would like it if we kept some of their brochures and information in our office, but it's not required as part of the agreement. All application, approval, you know, receiving of the funds goes through the Iowa Finance Authority. Really, all our office will be doing is accepting a check from the Iowa Finance Authority. And if they show us that the, the property owner has given permission, providing them with possibly, you know, parcel number, address, check paid off, here's an extra copy of the receipt for them. It is a one-time, I think it's a once, kind of a one of those one-time in your life or ownership of the home that you can apply for this and be accepted, so.
And it's specifically related to the period of the pandemic, so nothing that happened previous to?
The initial portion that we're we're agreeing to is to accept the payment there on their website and their marketing materials. It has to kind of derive from lost income due to pandemic-related issues.
The agreement seems like another reason for the agreement is to make it crystal clear that the Treasurer's Office is not involved in making any decisions for who qualifies or does not qualify and should not be telling people that they would or would not qualify.
Yeah. Basically, part of the agreement is just, we would say this is an additional resource if, because we do already send people to at times they'll go to, based on what they're asking, we might send them to Legal Aid of Story County, we might send them to some other programs out there or people out there who are willing to help in situations. This would just be another thing where we could say you can reach out to them.
When does the program sunset, or does it?
That's the thing where I said initially, it is all about adverse effects from the pandemic. If there is money left over, they may expand the program, as we've been seeing with, you know, lots of different programs that were started in that 2021, 22 area. At time, over time, they've expanded. Right now, part of the requirement is that there must be proof of financial hardship from the pandemic. And I think that's how they receive this funding.
This is leftover, this is that original mortgage assistance, our funding that they had that just kind of.
The question would be if, if if the Iowa Finance Authority expands their their kind of qualificating factors into something. It's not really our responsibility to determine that, and we would still be happy to help out taxpayers by accepting a payment from the Iowa Finance Authority, whether it only derives from that or not, but it'd be up to the the actual Homeowner Assistance Fund to make those determinations. And up until last summer when they did this changed agreement, most county attorneys and county treasurers were declining to participate in the program. Since they updated their agreement and changed that, we've had a lot more counties agree to enroll in the program and accept these payments, so. Sometimes it's okay being first, but a lot of times we like to let somebody else test the waters first.
Any other questions for Ted?
Okay, thank you. I move approval of the Iowa H HAF program agreement between Iowa Finance Authority and the Story County Treasurer's Office.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Heddens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Thanks for bringing that forward. Ted. Moving now to departmental reports. We have Animal Control Quarterly Report.
I know kitties or puppies.
Hmm.
Although she need to do show and tell each quarter.
Yeah. Yeah. That, that sounds good. Good morning.
Good morning. The last quarter, we welcomed, welcomed a total of a hundred and thirty-two animals, which not only consisted of dog and cat, but chinchillas and guinea pigs. We had sixty-two kittens and cats and two dogs in foster care last quarter while they awaited spay neuter surgeries and medical treatments. Animal control calls, we had sixty incidents that we looked into with confined and unconfined stray pickups, welfare checks, and several bite cases. And we have finally been able to accept credit card payments for adoptions, reclaims, and donations, which has been very helpful. As the school year began in August, we invited the Schrock Club students helping rescue animals to volunteer, and they focused on animal socialization, basic cleaning and tidying up. We also had the Plucky Paws Volunteer Group, and with them and other volunteers, we totaled a hundred and six point five volunteer hours.
Nice.
And then we ended the summer with our Book Buddies Literacy Club, but we're planning on bringing that back next summer as well, when school's out. And we started attending Catterday at the Kohl Library every third Saturday of the month, just to showcase some of our adoptable cats at the library. And our staff also received additional training with myself and animal control officer attending, or achieving their ACO2 certifications. And we also attended a two-day in-person cruelty investigations workshop hosted by the ASPCA. And then I also wanted to share with you, last week we got in the mail, we got a plaque from Best Friends. It's in recognition of achieving a no-kill status during the calendar year 2022 by exceeding a ninety percent save rate for cats and dogs.
Nice.
Oh, wonderful.
Congratulations. That's great.
Any question?
Something?
So how old are you right now with your dogs and kitties?
Gosh, last time I looked, yesterday we had seventy-one cats and dogs. I'd have to count in my head, um, three seven, I think seven dogs.
It sounds like the foster program is just working out great.
It's so helpful. It's so helpful to have that program and not just be full of all those animals and then they stay healthy.
Right.
So, great.
Good work. Thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Good work.
Any upcoming agenda item? Nope. Alright. Moving to public comment number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. Board may not take any action on comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing no one step forward or raise their hand, we'll close public comment number two and move to Liaison Assignments, Committee Meeting Updates, and Announcements from the Supervisors. Supervisor Heddens, you want to start?
Sure. Before I talk about my schedule, I just want to mention that last week I attended Attorney General Brenna Beards, a billion, a bird, excuse me. Uh, the billion dollar.
Opioid pill.
Yeah, opioid pill. And the concept is there are eleven hospitals in the state that are partaking in this program. I think she said there are three billion opioid pills in the nation, I mean, out there. And these, there's about ten million in Iowa. And so looking at ways to help minimize that, and so they are looking at other ways to help to get rid of those pills, and they partnered with this Goldfinch Foundation. And what it is are some new protocols for when folks are going into surgery. They're really finding that they don't necessarily, they're not saying they don't need an opioid necessarily, but not for the length of time. And so kind of the protocol of having folks using Tylenol or NSAIDs ahead of time. They know that when individuals go through surgery, they're already at kind of a deficit because they have to fast, nothing to eat or drink, you know, after midnight oftentimes. So, or if their surgery is later in the afternoon, they've gone, you know, almost two days without that. So they have a special nutritional drink that they can drink up to two hours before surgery. They have them ahead of time taking Tylenol or an NSAID, whatever, to prepare for it. And then they have in these boxes too, whichever works for you, ice packs or heat packs and stuff. And they're really finding through some of their pilot program is shorter use of opioids. They're, you know, they're saying they're not going to get rid of them by just Tylenol and end up altogether, but it's been shorter use. And in some hospitals, after some surgeries, they've had no one go back to the emergency room because they've, you know, they waited too long, you know, oftentimes when you come out of surgery, you've got like a block. And so it's, you're not in pain, so you're not taking your medicine for twenty-four hours, and then all of a sudden it hits you and you're rushing into the ER. They're finding that because of doing these protocols and staying on top of these non-addictive ones, they're actually seeing less people go into the ER. I did add, oh, and then in the box also has a bottle, so when you're better, you know, that you can put the excess pills in and it just dissolves them, so they're inert to think. I did ask the question about, is she are they looking at doing something to help folks that already have these pills in their cabinets to get rid of them? And the Attorney General said something else is going to be rolling out in the future. So she just kind of, she's working on something, she wouldn't comment anymore on it. But it was really quite interesting. I would say there's probably about maybe forty people that attended the press conference, and they had not only her speaking and someone from Goldfinch Foundation, but one of the physicians, she's foot and ankle, and so she's probably one of the busiest surgeons that they have, who really talked about seeing a difference. And she even commented, she thought that, you know, with her patients, Tylenol and Ibuprofen, gosh, is that going to be enough? Shorten the length of time with the opioids and really has been folks markedly doing better than she even expected, so. I just wanted to share that that was something that Something that I attended last week. Um, as for my schedule this week, it looks like we have environmental health recognition this afternoon. Um, tomorrow I have a transportation collaboration and then a healthy counties um, meeting in the afternoon. I will be out Thursday and Friday. Um, attending my mother's birthday. Monday, I have an opioid funding meeting and then a MICA board meeting. I also attended the um. Medicaid Home and Community Based Waivers Meeting yesterday down in Polk County. Very interesting, they certainly did not plan for people, um, I mean, it's the first meeting and it's Polk County. Uh, with a room that would maybe hold about forty people, if even that, and there were probably three times that amount of people that showed up, so it was delayed, at least they delayed starting. And extended it on the other end, so nothing got. Cut out so that they could. Open the doors to another room. But they are talking about uh, for individuals, be the elderly or people with disabilities who received. Home and community based waiver services, which allows them to live in their home more independently or in the community. More independently. Of streamlining some of the waivers because you could be on, for example, my son's on the intellectual disability waiver and one of the, the services he receives is um. Supported community living, so it takes them out in the community and interact, interact socially. Well, if you're on the health and disabilities waiver, that does not. Does not have that type of service on there. So they're really trying to look at. How can we? Really review the service system? And have it more tailored to what the individual needs versus being locked into. You're in this waiver and you can only get this. Um, they're looking at just the seven current waivers that we have going down to two. It could be an adult one and then a children's one, or they're not quite sure they're flushing, flushing that out. Um, they do know they have to get this through, would have to get it through the legislature, not this legislative session, it would be. Next year.
Work to do, I would imagine.
Yeah, there's a lot to do, they want to do all, they've got several um. Sessions, if you want to attend one, the next closest would be, well, the next closest would be Marshalltown, but it's on a Tuesday right during our board meeting. Um, but they are going to have a couple virtual, they're going to have three virtual, one of them being in Spanish as well, so that they are helping to really. Garner some good, good information, I got the impression that a lot of people walked away from that meeting. Being a little bit more hopeful. Of what the Department of Health and Human Services is doing, the Medicaid Director Liz Matney is who. Um, addressed the group, but also Director Kelly Garcia was there as well. Um, and one of the things they said they're looking at are different levels of care and using more technology similar to the home that my. Son is in, that allows for that independence, but yet still has. You know, a good level of support, so it'll be interesting to see over the next, the next year, and I may sign up to attend. One of the Zoom sessions as well, I just wanna. Make sure it's consistently saying the same thing to everybody.
Yeah. A good idea. All right, uh, Supervisor Merkin.
Um, it's environmental health recognition, um, this afternoon, as Supervisor Heddens said. Tomorrow morning I have a SIRPA administrative subcommittee meeting, uh, just kind of talking about how SIRPA is going to be moving forward with some of the changes that have come out. Um, have several conflicting, um. Things I want to do in the afternoon, I'm not sure what I'm going to do, but there will be something, there's an open house in Story City, there's um. ADC and there's also transportation collaboration, they're all overlapping, so I'll get to one of them, I think. At least, uh, Rural Leadership Exchange is in Nevada. This week. So I'm registered for that this Thursday and Friday, thank you Bryce, appreciate all you've done on that. And then next week. Um. On a second. Ah, we have the opioid funding meeting um, in the afternoon on Monday. Noon to four. So, kind of a busy week.
Yeah. Um, today I have uh, Story County College Access Network work. Meeting right before our environmental health recognition. And then tomorrow morning I have um, Nevada Economic Development Commission in the morning. And then um, NACO has a new DEI task force that they're kicking off. Um, so I have that meeting um, from twelve to three thirty, which overlaps the open house in. Story City and Story County. Um, transportation collaboration as well as the he- healthy counties meeting, um, and then their assistant city manager. Presentation uh, for Ames is scheduled for tomorrow afternoon, I'm hoping to. Pop in for some of that. Um, and then I have a CCJ Board of Directors meeting. What, um, also tomorrow evening. And then the uh, Rural um, Iowa Leadership Exchange. Thursday and Friday. And the opioid funding meeting on Monday. And I believe that is it's. Anything further?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded Merkin.
Aye.
Heddens.
Aye.
Basil, aye, we're adjourned, thank you.